I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda for this August 12, 2025 Board of Education Public Hearing as presented.
Second.
Second by Tom, was that you said that? All right, so I guess we'll move right to the presentation and I understand Brent, you are on the show.
So if you recall, in June, we had our Code of Conduct Public Hearing, the first round. Do you adjust any changes that were going to occur for the 25, 26 Code of Conduct? At that meeting, based on some policies that were approved, we knew we would have to make some changes to the Code of Conduct. At the July Board of Education Meeting, we adopted Internet-enabled device policy, which therefore then impacts our district Code of Conduct. So just to review a couple. Just a few reminders, the Code of Conduct is reviewed annually, but it's also anytime there is a revision, we have to do a public hearing on it. So there is a potential that we may have to do one more, if not more, throughout the school year, as we've done in the last couple of years. So anytime there's a change of Code of Conduct, we will do a hearing or a public comment.
Public hearing, yeah.
Yeah. Caleb, take a look. Okay, thanks. Obviously, a thank you to the district Code of Conduct. So these are the members, they are the same from when we did the initial one. I will say, a large number of them did join me a little over a week ago to go through this review, so even in the summertime, they're willing to jump on. There's a lot of interest in this particular topic. So great participation and good feedback from the committee as well, too. Again, this is the introduction into the Code of Conduct, right? It applies to all students, teachers, district personnel, parents, board members, and any visitor throughout the district that comes onto our school property. These are the different sections of the Code of Conduct. Tonight, we're specifically going to look at the prohibited student conduct. That's where this particular item fits best in the recommendation from our attorney. Again, these are more of the different sections. Again, nothing has changed as far as the Code of Conduct sections go. So these are all additions, they're not changes, right? So these are things that were added into the Code of Conduct. The first one is on page 18, under conduct that is insubordinate. It says, you know, failing to comply with the district policy concerning the use of Internet-enabled devices during the school day. Discuss further is because really on page 20, I think 20 and 21, or 21 and 22, that's where it outlines more of the details in which they would be following in their insubordination as well. So you saw the addition there. On pages 21 and 22, this is where we start to define a little bit more. I've just pulled highlights out of there, I didn't pull the whole section out. You know, what is defined as an Internet-enabled device, right? And what does it mean? So a student cannot possess an Internet-enabled device the entire school day. So that's that definition of held about that we reviewed with the policy. So it's essentially defining what was in the policy as well, too. Internet-enabled devices shall not include devices that are not capable of connecting the Internet. So like, there are certain items out there, like certain watches at some of the youth where, say, you remember younger students, where it is not an Internet-enabled device, it may make a phone call, it may text, but doesn't have the ability to connect to the Internet, as in connect to social media apps or anything like that. They took a little games on it. That is a separate item, like that's a smartwatch, so to say, that we put in the building Code of Conduct, but it technically doesn't fall under an Internet-enabled device, right? So they're really trying to stop the use of the social media and the communication back and forth from students via, you know, the different apps that they use throughout the school day, but it is not an Internet-enabled device. So we just have to keep that in mind when we talk about a student that is in violation of the Internet-enabled device. So one of the things that we defined in the policy was where the students can store. So this again, in the Code of Conduct outlines that pre-K through 5, it's cubbies or designated location within the classrooms, depending on the classroom setup. The student just can't have it on their possession. And then grades 6 through 12, it's in the lockers. Remember, 6 through 8 currently do the lockers currently, and you know, 9 through 12, it'll be something new that has to be enforced or, you know, by the assistant principal or the principal. Where it says otherwise directed by the principal, remember that there may be a situation or a case where a teacher asks the students to bring, if they have an Internet-enabled device or cell phone, to the classroom. That's where, if they have permission from the building principal or the administration that they can use the device throughout the school day, or I shouldn't say throughout the school day, in that specific class that they're getting permission from. Also, under the Code of Conduct, it clearly defines how parents may communicate with their, if they need to get a message to their child, right? It's via phone, which is something we've done in the past. And then we do have now set up email accounts for each building. So if you needed a message to get to your middle school, it would just be HMS@hcsdK12.org. And that email address actually goes to a few different people, so that it's not just one person monitoring an email address, it just copies and goes to everybody. So we've kind of have a couple of different options for parents or guardians to communicate with their son or daughter in school. The next piece is the actual consequences. So this is a little bit different, because it was a recommendation for us to actually put consequences or, you know, in order in which the consequences would be handed out to a student if they were in possession or caught using their Internet-enabled device. Again, it's not a district-owned device, it is their personal device that we're talking about here. So we have had conversations with the middle school. This is kind of the middle school philosophy that we've used over the last couple of years. The high school has agreed to adopt the same consequence, and I believe at the elementary is they do file this as well already. So first offense would be a verbal warning. So that's just a reminder to the student to put it away for the day. Second offense will be the Internet-enabled device will be taken and stored in the main office, and the student will pick it up at the end of the day. And then the third offense would be the Internet-enabled device to be stored in the main office, and the parent or guardian will be required to pick it up at some point throughout the day as well, too. Those were the recommended consequences for obviously use of it. If there are other offenses, that's really where it would carry into other categories of insubordination, right? So now we're getting away from the consequences, because remember, we can't suspend a student for solely based on the Internet-enabled device. Now, after the third offense, it'll be found insubordinate, you know, by not following or listening to the directive of a school administrator. Those are the big outline changes. Basically, again, it follows the outline of the Internet-enabled policy that we had adopted in June, and that will be included in the Code of Conduct. And then if approved tonight at the board meeting, then we would obviously update and change all the student handbooks as well, too, before they go out to the parents.
So I got questions. Any questions from the table first?
Quick question. Just putting on my "I'm gonna cause trouble" hat. If I get myself a flip phone, not Internet-enabled, and I'm just like, I pull it out at lunch because I feel like playing snake, what of it?
Yeah, that's something that we have to discuss within each building, because that really doesn't fall under the category of Internet-enabled device. But you can have other items, like cell phones, used during, throughout the school day. That's a different category, and that's a different item, separate from the Internet-enabled device.
So genuine question, can I take my Nintendo? Like, can I take my Game Boy to school now? Because when I was a kid, that was no-go.
That's a no-go.
Okay. Does that basically, a flip phone basically falls under like random electronic device?
Something like those. Those will be more defined, depending on what the building administrators does decide.
Okay. I think it would, it may be nice to let parents know ahead of time, so that they are not having that argument with their offspring.
Yes. And those discussions are going on within, like both administrative units within the middle school and high school. Those are going on tomorrow, is when they're having that. So you expect communication on that to be forthcoming.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
No, true.
Any other board member comments or questions? All right, this is a public hearing, so at this point, I will open it to the public. If there's any public comment or questions on the additions to Code of Conduct, make yourself known. All right. I will assume none. So seeing no further business, I will look for a motion to adjourn this public hearing. Salute. By Tom.
Seconded.
And seconded by Mary. All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you for the work on that. It looks good.
So we move to our regular meeting, which I guess we technically can't open early, even though we're gonna go right through. The August 12th Board of Education Meeting as presented. So moved by Dave and seconded by Laura. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are in the meeting. Immediately, let's look to go to executive. So can I have a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment of a particular person, a settlement reached with the district, and a contract negotiation with the district? So moved by Laura.
Second.
Seconded by Jess. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we will move to executive for the audience. Hard to say exactly how long, we're hoping 15 minutes, but it could be a little longer than that. Can I have a motion to end executive session and return to regular session? Laura, seconded by Laura.
Second.
Seconded by Jess. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we are back in regular session. So with that, I am going to jump into item C1, and that is going to be a presentation from my colleague, Mr. Doyle, the Managing Director of the Industrial Development Agency. So Sean, take it away.
Yeah. Thank you for having me. Where's the best spot to address? I didn't know if there's a hotline.
Wherever you want.
I think, okay.
Yeah, I wasn't sure. Video or some component of that.
So thank you for having me again. I just wanted to talk for about 15 minutes and watching the clock here, because I know it's a thick agenda. Hamburg Development Companies is essentially like cadre of economic development and incentive programs for the town of Hamburg, often applied in similar fashion to other municipalities throughout the state. But we're here to talk specifically about Hamburg, and even more in depth, specifically about the Hamburg, the impact of the Hamburg Development Companies on the Hamburg Central School District. We have three companies, the Industrial Development Agency, the Hamburg New York Land Development Corporation, and the Hamburg Development Company. Each of them have separate functions, some have one board, or two have one board, and then the Hamburg Development Company has another board, I'll get into that. One of the kind of children of our program is Buffalo Computer Graphics. This is a company located on Bayview in the town of Hamburg. This opened-
Are you looking to have these slides? Pardon? Are you?
No, I don't have, I didn't know how I will advance them.
Oh.
So, does somebody have a remote?
Yeah.
Oh, you got it? Thank you. So Buffalo Computer Graphics opened in 1982. They did an expansion on the Bayview, and it's a veteran-owned small business. They have experienced technical staff. Thank you. That are essentially hardware and software engineers, and they do simulation software for operator training and system training for generally the name. So it's a really cool project. One of the things that I think Cam and I, we really enjoy getting involved with, some of these local employers and some of the unique things they do. This was a two-plus million dollar investment, 40 full-time employees. Their incentive package expires in 2027. Right now, they pay about full taxes to the town, county, and school district, $60,000. So that's essentially-
Was there a slide for that one, Sean?
Pardon me?
Was there a slide for that one?
No.
Okay.
No, that was just kind of an intro tab.
Gotcha.
But next. So I talked a little bit about this, so I'll review this quickly. What our group of companies is looking to do, create jobs, induce investment in the town of Hamburg, sell and develop land through our Land Development Corporation, bring business to Hamburg through relationship building, through talking about the community, available sites, any types of benefits we like to promote throughout the area, essentially serving as an advocate. In 2024, just to highlight and recap, each year, we hold ourselves very accountable, and we keep our goals. They roll through on a monthly update in our regular board meetings. We had $9.7 million in new capital investment, 10 jobs created, 63 retained. The pilot revenue, so revenue to the taxing jurisdictions generated through our projects, is just over 1.5 million. And then through our agencies as well, we often look to support other activities that can support employment and job growth in the town of Hamburg. So we've provided $55,000 in grants in the past year back into the local community. So that's essentially just a snapshot of what we did last year. We have a nine-member, so speaking specifically about the Industrial Development Agency and our Land Development Corporation, it is one board. It's a nine-member board, they're formally appointed through the town of Hamburg. So they need not necessarily be elected, but they are appointed through the Town of Hamburg Board by majority vote of the quorum. One thing that is unique specifically to the Hamburg IDA is that the board is set up to be not only subject matter experts, but representatives from the taxing jurisdictions. So by code, we are required to have a Hamburg School District Board Member on our IDA Board, a Frontier District School, a Frontier District Board of Education Member, or a person appointed by that board, and then in turn recommended to the town, and then the town appoints those people. Similarly, for the villages, the Village of Blaisdell and the Village of Hamburg, and then we have a number of at-large members. We have a number of requirements in terms of financial accountability and transparency. So we have a CFO essentially of the town is also the CFO of our agency. We have a treasurer, and then we're subject to the Authority Budget Office, the State Controller's Office, and then also an annual independent audit for each of the three companies. So essentially, through the Industrial Development Agency, we work to essentially, you know, grow the economic development of the local economy here in the town of Hamburg. How do we do that? That's through the pilot project, that's the payment in lieu of taxes. There's sales tax, and a sales tax abatement on non-production equipment, mortgage recording tax, and then some third-party grants and incentive programs that we do. But essentially, you know, our main driving tool is that tax abatement program called the pilot. So essentially, what is a payment in lieu of taxes? So I'm gonna point to this chart here, which can be rather helpful in understanding this a little bit. So as we're talking to a developer, a company, as they're looking to potentially locate in the town, we look at essentially where they're looking to locate, where are they looking to invest? So essentially, the existing value, maybe it's just raw land, and they're paying taxes on raw land value. What we look to through the pilot project, and what we can only do, is discount or abate future investment into the parcels. So what happens is, is those payments before taxes into your municipalities, into your taxing jurisdiction. So you have, you know, you set a budget, and then that generates a tax rate for the levy. So that is essentially the payments before your investment. If a company would come in and invest, they would, you know, say, build a $2 million building. So that taxable value goes up. It's separate from the general fund. If approved into the pilot program, they would get, you know, a discount on taxes from where, what they would be at full assessed value. But essentially, you're making an improvement upon your tax base. So the taxes are essentially, you're getting more tax revenue. It's a little separate from the levy. So it's essentially like a pilot revenue, which is additional cash essentially into the taxing jurisdictions. So a requirement of the pilot would be job growth, job retention, this capital investment essentially taking a step forward. The program generally lasts seven to 10 years. So what happens is, is that as this company invests, and they have a high amount of debt service and various obligations to meet to the IDA and to their construction end, their payments are discounted. So they get essentially like a coupon at the first year, and it's more generous, the first year, the second year, the third year, and so on. Essentially, the pilot, the payments go up from year to year. After seven years or 10 years, depending upon what program they're in, the pilot would then essentially, assuming they met all their goals, the pilot would then be essentially terminated, and they would be taxed at full value on the assessed parcel. I'm gonna try to move on a little quicker. This is an example from an investor perspective. I'm looking at a project, I would love to look at a project like this, we're trying to drive projects like this. Some infill parcels in the Village of Hamburg, which would impact the school district. We have some nice parcels of land right in the village. It would be very nice and suitable for a building like this, a mixed-use building, 10 units, and some retail or commercial space on the first floor. The cost to build a building of this type would be about $5.5 million. You would have some net income from rents, and then a sale price in 10 years. Your return on investment is 4.69%, which is not good enough for an investor. Typically, you're looking at, you know, rates of 10, 11, and even greater to invest in areas like Hamburg, a beautiful area, great area, great communities to invest in. But unfortunately, in today's economy, between interest rates, cost of construction, is very difficult. The IDA incentives, and this is an example of how we leverage investment, the value of incentives of a project of this type would generally be about $550,000. Now, that's not cash out the door, that's a discount of the future revenues. We're not taking anything out of the levy, we're not removing anything from, you know, essentially taxpayers that are existing in the current jurisdiction. We're giving a discount on this new investment. So with that $550,000 of abatement, it essentially leverages the return on investment, you know, basically 1.1 percentage point. So it's not, that's why you're seeing parcels in the area, why you're hearing, if you read the paper, a lot of, you know, development projects around town that are just not happening. There's a number of headwinds, but you can see the incentive model that we offer and how it does work in times where, you know, some of the other variables are a little bit more in line. So with this investment, say their hurdle rate would be about that, and they would go forward with the investment, the value of the pilot payments would be $83,000. You'd have 10 new jobs, you'd have 18 temporary construction jobs for the 12 to 18 months it would take to construct this project. So essentially, you know, the taxing jurisdictions are taking a step forward, they're making investments, they're growing jobs, and getting additional taxable revenue, albeit, you know, they have to incentivize these projects to really try to help and manage the investment and make sense of it. Some of the projects that we've touched within the Hamburg School District, I would say, you know, going through and preparing this presentation, between the IDA and the Hamburg Development Company, which I'll talk to in just a second, we've probably touched like 95% of the buildings in the general commercial corridor. All of these projects have benefited through the IDA. The Palace Theater did not get an abatement. The Palace Theater actually had an opportunity for a state grant, but they had some financial struggles, they could not leverage the state grant. They had to invest the money first and then get repaid. This was to upgrade the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems, the roof. What we ended up doing, the IDA Board ended up doing, was we did a short-term loan to the Palace Theater to essentially, they spent our money and then paid us back. We had an interest-free loan with the Palace Theater. So we'll try to do things within state, general municipal law, which governs us, but we will try to perform activities that may be unique, but anything to, you know, keep a valuable resource like the Palace Theater in the Village of Hamburg that is a huge complement to what we have there, keep it up and running. Staub Square, One Buffalo, 32 Main Street, 12 Main Street, where Spock Coffee is, these projects have all essentially been driven and benefited through the Industrial Development Agency. So this agency, before my time, probably were 80% of these projects, but I think it really takes a lot of credit to the board and how they had helped Main Street and Buffalo Street and the Village of Hamburg for us. We have some industrial and manufacturing projects in the Village of Hamburg as well. We don't have a huge impact on manufacturing industrial in the school district area, largely because of zoning. So some of these projects, there's only, the land has to be compatible. We're not gonna build an industrial project, although this kind of really ekes on the edge of a township, you know, of a residential area. But we try to, you know, work with the current zoning and work with projects that are compatible. So Staub Machining, they have recently invested $10 million into a new building in the Village of Hamburg. This is huge in terms of tax, tax revenue for the area. Again, it's abating, but we've taken a large step forward in terms of leveraging a $10 million investment, a number of good paying jobs, and further growth in this area. They've, this company has essentially taken over a whole street, and from year to year, we've incentivized these projects, they've continued to grow and invest and expand in the town and the Village of Hamburg, in so much that they acquired a company from Ohio, a company called Alert Wheel, and then relocated the operations to the town of Hamburg, which is unfortunately all too, you know, non-common, all too uncommon in the, in New York State. Another small one was Servpro, the South Towns, a local company, small business employer. They had about a 9,600 square foot expansion. Lastly, the Hamburg Development Corporation. This is a great tool for small businesses in and around the town of Hamburg. It's essentially a revolving loan fund. So we work with companies that are trying to expand, trying to maybe add services or add products, and we can do low-interest loans that are from $25,000 up to $100,000. And again, a number of the businesses in the village, a number of the smaller manufacturers have benefited through this program. It was federal funds that were, that are allocated to the town, so they're federal dollars, and we essentially are a custodian of them. We have about $300,000 now, and we can loan out, you know, up to $100,000. We collect the interest as the interest rate payments come in, that principal in interest essentially grows, grows the loan fund at this, you know, in this program. So right now, I believe we have about six active loans, I think we'll jump, we might jump ahead to get to it, but we have about $318,000, I think, of loans receivable of this program running in the town of Hamburg. Excuse me. And there is a job growth requirement. So again, even with this program, every $35,000 lent to the company, we're looking for one full-time equivalent of job growth to that company. These are some of the companies that have benefited from the Hamburg Development Corporation Loan Fund. This is a separate board from the IDA. It's essentially, the members are voted in, and they have three-year appointments, they can serve two, three-year terms, and then they would have to step away for at least a year, just for accounting purposes. These are some other economic development activities. You can read through those. One I would highlight is the Village of Hamburg Economic Development Committee, where I sit with Superintendent Adams on that committee, where we're looking to continually drive the Village of Hamburg. You know, you have competing villages that are starting to get some momentum now, so it's always like, how can we keep the Village of Hamburg growing? How can we look at some of these infill parcels? We're looking at through this round- We're looking at through this brownfield redevelopment committee, you know, the Chikwaga Concrete Plant, obviously that's in some level of limbo. I don't know if we all really know what's going on there, but that is a prime site, and we know that there's a higher and better use for that site, an opportunity there that would create more jobs and again, bring more investment to the Town and the Village of Hamburg. So, pretty close. Does anyone have any questions?
I think the most rest is trying to stay under the timeline.
Does anyone have any questions for Sean? First of all, thank you, great presentation.
Thank you so much, that's so interesting.
Since I did such a lousy job of introducing Sean, and now I'm gonna fix it here. You know, Sean is really like a, if, one of the strongest, if not the strongest champions of Hamburg. I mean, you've seen how active he is. Here he is on a Tuesday, you know, advocating to twenty-five people for what the work that his companies do, and you know, Sean is, you know, really a great soldier in terms of trying to build Hamburg from an economic perspective, and I think you're an unsung hero in this community.
Good, thank you. And my contact info is there, my cell is there. I know, you know, there are some misnomers to these programs, but they're often misnomers because they catch headlines, they get clicks. I mean, you guys are subject to some things as elected as well. I'm not elected, I'm appointed, but, you know, if there's ever any questions, we've had people attend public hearings and we have invited them to meet and kinda go through this. I mean, everyone's gonna have their opinion, not everyone can agree, but our hope, I think, is to really drive Hamburg and make Hamburg a prime economic destination, but also, you know, the continuing kinda work we do to try to dispel how these economic incentives work and just really clarify, I mean, it's a competitive environment. Companies can locate anywhere they want more and more often nowadays. So, the incentives make a difference, you know, for small companies and big companies too, because often the big companies are beholden to shareholders. So if I'm a shareholder and I hold the share of a very large company, they're foregoing incentives, that's essentially, you know, I have, I may have a problem with that, you know, in terms of how the company is running. So they do make a huge impact in how companies allocate their capital stack, where they invest, and we're gonna work to, you know, with the financial guidance of our board, to leverage that in the best manner possible and make it a wise investment for the town. So, thank you all. Feel free to jot down my information if you like.
Thanks, Sean.
Have a great night.
Let's leave it up on the table.
Eventually, it'll get handed off to another.
So.
No.
Okay. Thanks again, Sean. So, continuing through our department, or yeah, apartment building reports, we will move into the capital project. First, we're gonna talk about the current capital project. Go ahead. There's two capital project reports, so I just wanna make sure we're all clear which one we were on. Yeah, did you wanna do an introduction?
No, you know what, yeah, why don't I, first of all, I wanted to thank Cam for setting up this up for Sean Doyle to come out for us. Like, we hear Cam monthly giving his report on the IDA, and to, and we know how valuable it is, and like, one of the things we talk about with Hamburg is like, you go outside in the afternoon, you're driving around the community and you see the village is alive, it's alive with people, alive with families and everything along those lines. Well, the work that Sean Doyle does and the folks in the IDA are part of the reason why that exists. So thank you for making that connection as we become more well-versed in the good work that you do. Sean Fowles has been hard at work, along with Turner Construction and Gordon Joe's Architects and all of our partners with the Capital Project, and Sean's gonna share with you a bit about the Capital Project update as things are going on now, and then from there, I will jump in and talk about some choices the board needs to make with regard to the final phase of the Discover 2021 Capital Project, which is, we're deep in Phase Three now, but go ahead, Sean, thanks.
Thank you. So before I just run through the usual slideshow, I wanna go just touch on the key points in the report that you guys always get every month. Top right corner there, just pointing out that Phase Two and Three, that's basically the, what we're doing at the high school and here at Armor Elementary are coming to a close rapidly, basically twenty-four days till we're due to be substantially complete. A lot of work to get done, but it's coming together really quick, so. The schedule milestones there for Phase Two and Three you see on the left-hand column are just the bolded ones or some updates. You'll see most things are moving a little quicker than originally intended, as we kinda pulled the high school together for the most part, as well as the Armor Interior renovations. We were originally promising to be done by eight-twenty-nine, if you will, with all the contractors. We are trending towards being done this week substantially, along with the playground as well. I think you saw it driving in, but that is coming together quick and should be done in the coming days. Change order-wise, you know, finances to date, not much has moved on that chart. The one thing I wanna point out is that the Phase Two committed cost did increase slightly just with changes that are ongoing and happening. We're a little over north of twenty-nine million now for Phase Two. Phase Three ultimately is going to drop slightly from that number, we're pretty confident in that, so we're gonna be a little under budget wrapping that one up. And then that number you see under the Phase Four current estimated cost is basically what you have tangibly left of the total referendum value of sixty-eight-five, that twenty-one and change million-dollar number. Change order-wise this month, the only one you'll see there is a pending change order for Phase Three on the docket for $6,615. That is for roller shades in additional spaces that were covered in the original scope of the project that were requested. That's the only one up for approval this month. Next month will be the big moving month as we try to move towards physically closing out. Phase Two especially, but also with Phase Three, you'll see some more changes coming through next month, far more than what we got here. Other than that, running through the photo slide here, so what you're looking at, these first four photos on the top are kinda the four pictures of the boiler room as we tore that to pieces, and what you're seeing now in the bottom two pictures are kinda current or a couple days old photos with majority of the equipment set, the large thirty-to-forty inch flue ducts going up through the roof servicing the new boiler system, you're looking at the new domestic hot water tanks, expansion tanks, all sorts of equipment there in that boiler room that'll be servicing the high school in about a month. This is your high school odd, so we went forward with some change orders to update the dilapidating ceilings, we'll say, paint, carpet, new aisle lighting, really looks good, and the bottom two photos are the relatively finished product. These photos are some of the major mechanical equipment that has been, that went up onto the high school roof this month. So what you're seeing on the top right photo is the large new rooftop units that are servicing the odd and cafeteria areas showing up. See, we brought in a large boom crane, swinging those units up, I think it was July twenty-ninth, and bottom photos are those units in place with most of the, you know, weather tight duct ran out to service those. Those have been, those are getting ready to start up, I believe, next week. So you guys will have conditioned spaces in those areas. This is actually below the roof where that unit was set. This is your kitchen and cafeteria area, actually the senior lounge specifically, so on the left was the service area of the kitchen. We had a bunch of steelwork to do above there to accommodate that rooftop unit. The picture on the bottom is essentially showing that space substantially complete, put back together, new ceilings, new lighting. And then the senior lounge, that is also coming together, that's basically all the new mechanical ducts servicing the space up in the ceiling, and the new ceiling grid and lights being set. That area is actually just about done in terms of lights being on, tiles being in, ready to start cleaning up and turning it over. Now we're getting into the Armor, so this is the Phase Three project, just some before and after photos of classrooms getting gutted in terms of ceilings and lighting, and those classrooms now having new ACT ceilings and lights up. This set of photos is in here to show you some of the end results of the roller shade scopes, so getting, going from the old classic white blinds in basically the rest of the, you know, basically the whole building. These are some finished rooms with those new black roller shades installed. Lastly, your playground, before and after, just some of the earthwork that was going on, and then these are photos from late last week of them basically preparing to get ready to surface that space. It is ready to have rubber put down in the next two days. You're gonna see that playground come together quick, wrap up. Last two slides are just the generic schedules, again, there has not been significant changes here, so tracking towards our substantial completions on Phase Two and Phase Three, and then Phase Four bid going out late September, first week of October range for Union Pleasant. And then, again, your next project schedule, which is gonna segue a little bit into Mr. Adams's conversation, but just our broad schedule here for the plan for the next project overall.
Any other questions? Comments, concerns? Yep. Great job, as usual. Thank you. How are we handling the Discovery 2021 final phase discussion?
Right behind you. Greetings, everyone, board, admin staff, all our guests who came out tonight. I'm gonna talk to you briefly about Discovery 21 Phase Four, which is what we will be heading into. The folks who are here and the folks who are listening at home and in the audience here, I brought out some posters that were created in nineteen eighty-one. That was the hundredth anniversary of public education in Hamburg. There was a big celebration about that. If you've ever been in the high school and have been in the main foyer, you might see a wood carving that has a big one-hundred in the middle of it. That's like commemorates that event. Here's a picture of several group shots of boards of education. All right? We can do your picture another time with that. We also have the building of Armor Elementary over there, that sort of walks you through the building of this, the new school, the new Armor Elementary. Of course, the previous Armor Elementary is the administrative building. And then we have the building of the Hamburg Academy, and that's existence, which started up in eighteen sixty-eight. I say that because I always wanna couch what we're doing in sort of a historical perspective. We are carrying on the work, we're carrying on the legacy of others, and it's not because they looked at what they had and said, let's just keep things the way they are. It's because they saw what they had and said, we need to care about this place and we're going to continue to move forward with things. And that's what this Discover 2021 project's been all about. Phase Four, we've got some things to go over with what the Discover 2021, the project has been and is and what it will be. The first slide for the board, I just share with you some of the same slides that we showed at the board retreat. I just wanna remind people of what they call the MCA, the maximum cost allowance, which is the amount of money we can spend on a building per five years, all right? And right there, it shows you the reset dates of that. That's a reminder for us who were there for the board retreat of what we can look forward to, when this project is done, when's the next time we can do something, do another project at these schools. But I just want people to have that in their minds, to sort of put that in our framework for what we're talking about. As we move on from there, we talk about what the project's scope is, and the scope is something that's shared, of course, with the voters in the lead-up to the vote, it's something that the board is very much part of, it's something that the facilities committee is part of. With Discover 2021, we went out and said it was going to cover all sorts of things. Escalation of prices really, really got in our way with that. Many, many things within the scope were covered and many things had to be dropped from that scope of that project that we were able to do. While the pool is the most noteworthy example of that, there were others as well. As we decide in the next phase of the project, we should remind ourselves what we said, what we wanted Discover 2021 to be in the first place, and you see a whole list of things that are there. We have from the high school and the middle school and all the elementary schools concerned, and there was all sorts of things that we wanted to get done, some that we were able to, like if you look at music rooms, art rooms, auditoriums at the elementary schools, except for Union Pleasant. Keep in mind, we're gonna be talking about Phase Four in a moment. And there's also the ballfields, the parking lot, the boiler, the heating system at the high school, among others, that we were able to do. And this board in January twenty twenty-four had to make a decision about things, about where we were going to go. The Discover 2021 project, the voters approved for sixty-six and a half million. When that vote came through in October of twenty twenty-one, the voters approved the project where they borrow, where we borrow up to sixty-six and a half million. It's a sixty-eight and a half million dollar project. We had 1.75 million that came from capital reserves and $250,000 from the alumni foundation that came in with this as well. So that's why the difference between the amount that we were, that we are authorized to borrow and the amount of the project is different on there. So far, here is what we have been able to do. We're in the process of auditorium music and art, as I just said, for Armor, Boston Valley, and Charlotte, heating upgrades at Armor and the high school, IT upgrades for all six schools, playground resurfacing at Armor, that's ongoing now, lighting upgrades, Armor, Boston Valley, and Charlotte, plus the Fisher Athletic Complex, the bus loop, the health office at Boston Valley, and some AC at the high school as well. So that gives you a sense as to what was covered with it. We go back to that term, the scope. Here's what we have in terms of the scope for Phase Four, which is focused on Union Pleasant. The identified work to be completed, remember that comes from not only building tours, but that building condition survey which is done every five years. The identified work to be completed, the union side roof, the Pleasant Auditorium, art rooms, music rooms, classroom door replacement, especially on the Pleasant side, the health office, multiple toilet rooms, hallway flooring replacement, PA system upgrade, cafeteria ceilings and lighting, fencing in the Hawkins Lot, replacement of Pleasant walkways. I'm sure I've missed some here, however, what you need to know is the scope is not saying like this will absolutely positively get done, this is the work that's going to go out to bid, and those bids come back and we see what the value is of the, what we can afford within that, within those bids that come back. So our question is, and this is what's gonna lead to the board discussion, which is gonna be the most important part of this presentation, not what I'm saying, the question is really, are we going to go with an option one, which is where we borrow the ten, where we borrow ten million more roughly to complete some of that scope work, or do we go for an option two, which is where we borrow up to the full value of that sixty-six and a half million, and we're able to follow, and I don't wanna put out there and say we will do everything no matter, no matter what, because we might get hit with more escalation costs, but we'll be able to do a substantial amount more and possibly a little bit on a couple other elementary schools as well if we borrow that fifteen million. The reason for the, and I should tell you, like, just to be upfront about this, the difference between borrowing the ten million or fifteen million, the impact of that, if you're a resident of Hamburg, where you borrow that additional five million more going up to that sixty-six and a half that was authorized by the voters in October of twenty twenty-one. If you're a resident of Hamburg, it's ten dollars additional for a hundred thousand dollar assessed value, and then five eighty-six for the Town of Boston, eight twenty-four for Eden, and nine fifty-three for Orchard Park. And that information is courtesy of Rick Gancy, who is our financial advisor through this, who's sat with us through our facilities meetings and our board retreat as well, and he's with capital advisors, capital markets advisors. So our question is whether or not to, and I'll give you the background on this, and I can actually go back and sit down for right now. Thank you, Brett. The reason for the question between ten million or fifteen million is based on what we decided in January of twenty-four. In January twenty-four, when we went away from the idea of the pool being the bulk of Phase Four, we talked about the idea of saving five million, holding that off for the pool that would come in a next project. But that's not in keeping with how we go about capital projects. We don't borrow the sixty-six and a half million all at once. We borrow it piece by piece by piece. So that's why the question for you is, do we want to go with that idea of not borrowing that five million, or is it better for us as a district to decide to borrow up to what the voters approved in the fall of twenty-one? And with the impact being, you can do more work with the additional money. So I leave that question to sort of prompt the conversation among our board, and certainly our folks who are members of the facilities committee will likely have a lot to weigh in on, but you've all been part of this work and you're all part of the board retreat where we talked about it too. So what I'm asking for is that the board advise us on which option to go with tonight, and that is, do we wanna go to the sixty-one and a half million and leave that five million dollars out there, or do we wanna borrow up to what was approved by the voters in October of twenty-one of the sixty-six and a half? Okay? So I leave it to the board to have that discussion now.
Anybody wish to go first?
Yeah, I'll go first. You know, I think we should borrow the additional money because, as you see, it's not a big impact on the homeowners, and Union Pleasant- And Union Pleasant is always the school that always gets forgotten, you know? And it needs so much. It's our oldest school besides Armor, I mean, the administration building. And you need all of this, you know? So I'm looking at the list here. Certainly, the roof is something we have to take care of. I mean, it leaked, you know? So, you know, we got to fix that, and I think everything else is is very important. So I certainly would support the extra 5.
I just want to throw out there, I had the privilege of being part of the facility, so I did get to see a little bit extra than maybe what everybody got to see at the board meeting, just about. I'm a visual person, so I got to see a little bit more about what the scope was or what about the intentions about what we were planning, what we could do at Union Pleasant with this possible extra. And it was, it was amazing. And considering that Union Pleasant, because of the nature of the building and its historical beauty, it is in dire need of adjustments. I would, I would love to be able to use everything that we have available to us, especially since not using it is essentially leaving money on the table. This is aidable money that we don't, if we don't use it, it's not like it gets saved. It doesn't, it doesn't get saved towards anything that would be necessarily meaningful based on the understanding that you've given us. I don't want to discount that this is a, is necessarily negligible impact to taxpayers because it's easy for some people to say this is negligible. It's easy to say that, actually, this is kind of, I mean, if I compare Hamburg impacts to Boston, Hamburg is double the impact. That being said, it's a cost, it's a return on investment. I mean, the things that we do with this money for so many students across income levels is incredible. And and this district is, is, can do so much with this money. And that's the idea, is that it scales, right? And and I, I don't want to be really nilly with this money, but I can see how we are using it thoughtfully and that we are using it to help so many people. And that's, that's what taxes do. Everybody puts in a little bit, and it helps everybody a long way. So I'm, I'm for using this money to make them, using the money to make the most of it. And I think I would be for using the 15 million.
Is it possible to put the, I apologize, whoever, just, just with the slide that shows like the work to be completed? Because at our retreat, we did have this discussion, and I looked at that list, and the first item on there says roof, and roofs are expensive, like, we just know that. So my biggest concern was, I asked, so the public is aware, what would we get for 10? And what would we get for 15? And they said, honestly, the roof and the auditorium might be all we would get for 10. And then you go down the list. One of my biggest concerns was wanting to engage with the Union Pleasant teachers and staff. That's the building they work in. They're going to know what is going to make the biggest impact. But also looking at this, there are a lot of things that need to be done just because they are falling apart, things of that nature. But then you have like art rooms, music rooms, and that just really is about student experience. And all three of our other elementary schools got improvements to art rooms and music rooms. And I think those direct impacts to the kids are super important. I am just concerned that even at 15, just, and this is maybe because of the escalations we've seen, that this is a list that will not be completed with 15 million dollars. And what is going to get done, and how are we prioritizing what gets done? So that's my biggest concern. I do think that when you look at Union Pleasant, 15 million is, I think, I don't want to say the obvious choice, but it is such an enormous building that serves so many students. So I think upgrades there are absolutely necessary. But I think when we look at the needs, I think everyone's going to have a different opinion, and a roof needs to be done. But beyond that, are we engaging with that building staff and those teachers to find out where, how this list gets made in terms of biggest priority?
In terms of like, is there a future meeting with Union Pleasant staff about their prioritization? No, that's, like, I can, I can go into, I think I can answer it a bit, and certainly feel free to ask or other people to contribute too. The idea of like the, like, as Discover 2021 was being created, all sorts of meetings with stakeholders, end users about their desires and goals. You are totally right in that the roof is going to be a priority. For Union Pleasant, the doors are going to be a priority, doors that swing out into the hallway. You know, that's a priority. But also, and you're exactly right, Jess, with regard to the other elementary schools getting that music, art, auditorium, that's exactly what we'd be looking at for those, if, if, if we have that more limited pool. With the 15, you've got all sorts of other opportunities. For one, the toilet rooms would certainly be something that we could look at in a, I don't want to say full, but in a more full, full, full treatment to those. You'd have some other that are sort of like alternate components, like the hallways, that you could look at that, those pieces as well. I'll have, certainly Brent can weigh in, or anybody can weigh in with more specifics from the meeting that we talked about today. But one of the components that I, I'll leave that I sort of buried with regard to what I was saying is that that borrowing up to the full, that 66 and a half, will actually take us to Union Pleasant's maximum cost allowance and leave us a little bit more where we would be able to do the new playground services at the other, other elementary schools too. All right, that's, that's, and that, that work could begin, that work could begin next year with it too. So that's a, that's another factor. Within Phase Four. Within Phase Four. Brent, why don't you, I don't want to squeeze over.
The conversations have been ongoing at Union Pleasant, like, they've had their voice, they've shared their concerns. That's why the doors has become the biggest conversation because they continually asked us, when are our doors coming? Because Armor, Charlotte, Boston all have receiving new classroom doors. They want to know when they're next. Obviously, that is not something, we did most of these in-house. Union Pleasant, we can't do in-house, like, that's capital project work. Art rooms, music rooms, it's one department. You absolutely nailed it, right? Like, Charlotte, Armor, and Boston have had that. All those teachers meet on a monthly basis and talk about the great things and what they have and don't have, right? And I think from the beginning, they've always thought that they're going to get art and music rooms as well too. So the scope is, is just larger because at Union Pleasant, it's two art rooms, right? And, you know, it's two and three music rooms, right? Versus one music room, one art room at each of the other elementaries. So it's, it's, you know, when you say art room, like, to compare one to another, it's different because it's, it's double everything. Right, like, we'll do one auditorium, we're not doing both auditoriums, even though we know both auditoriums need the work, but let's do the one auditorium that hasn't been touched ever since the building was built. Let's do it right and do it well.
If I'm recalling correctly what you said, it's more of a, this is, when you, the scope is everything, and then based on, we'll put it up to bid, and then based on the, what we can do, that's when we start prioritizing. And, but to your point, where have we documented what our priority list is internally, even if we don't put that out to bid? Like, what's our, like, what's in our hands is what we want to be prioritized, not necessarily what we say to the universe or to the bidders, but we're going to prioritize. Do we have that documented anywhere?
Not the public, okay. We're not hiding.
Not the public, but like to bidders?
Right, got it, got it. Right, no, I understand.
They, they're only going to look at the document that we produced to say, this is what the scope of the project is. They're not going to listen in our conversation, be like, oh, this is what they said about Union Pleasant. No, they have to bid based on the document that they have.
Right, and that makes sense.
Whether they choose to not or not.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We're going to submit that document to them.
I, to Jess's point, and again, this is me coming from like higher ed and accreditation where like everything has to be written down and proven. But like, do you have any sort of documentation of like, we elicited this feedback from these teachers at this time, blah, blah, blah? And like, this is what we've decided to?
And it actually goes back to 2021 where there were groups made of each building that we went to, building by building, and said, what is your priority? And art and music continually came up over and over again about letting, let's, let's do some spaces that students actually work in. Let's not just talk about hallways and doors, let's talk about, like, actually experiences that the students are coming from. And that's really where the art and music came first. We're not done.
And to, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think that's something that we do well, is we have, we had stakeholder input. That was an extremely important part when we were laying out that capital project, was to have meetings with teachers, with buildings, with community members to ensure that we were getting input. So I'm, we could go way back to when that all started. I was also a part of the facilities meeting today, as was Tom Flynn. It was extremely comprehensive, and the thing that I took away from it was that putting off this work, it, costs are only going to rise, it's only going to be that much more. The building is extremely unique, it needs to be, have the same, our students need to have the same experiences and, and state-of-the-art classrooms as the other buildings have. And, you know, it's in the best interest of the community and the kids to move forward.
Yeah, I was going to say, to Mary's point with the tax implications, I don't want to make it seem like that is not something that, you know, is top of mind. The voters did approve this. However, when we are living in a time where there are many families making tough choices because of, you know, finances, to say $10 on taxes while there are people who are literally pinching pennies. On the flip side, though, to not go with a larger amount would be, I think, detrimental to our students at Union Pleasant, and they would absolutely have a different experience than our other elementary kids. And I would not want them to not have the things that they, they need, but also deserve, the other buildings have it, when the voters did authorize us to use the full amount.
I, I've gotten to the point where I'm, I think we should go to the full 15. Took me a while to get my head around that. I mean, being part of, you know, being involved with you guys, you know, from the, you know, initial planning stages, how much we've had to pivot on this project through, through various reasons. You know, obviously, a huge one was the shock of the cost of, of the pool once we get, that actually went out to bid. Roof's a no-brainer. That Pleasant Auditorium, like I said, I mean, that literally hasn't been, been touched. You know, they showed us some, they, they did kind of describe, showed us a couple of renderings. I love the fact that the, that the plan is to really utilize a lot of the aesthetics that are in there right now and really bring it back to life while bringing more of a modern feel to it at the same time. So I think it's, I think it's great to give those kids that opportunity. You know, we've all been in that building a lot. I mean, they, they literally just cut holes in walls and they made two buildings into one. And that's all they did. They didn't make it into one building, they made the two buildings that were attached. So I think the fact that, that adding those art rooms, the music rooms, making an art suite and a music suite, I think is, is huge. I think that's something that the teachers are going to really appreciate, not having to go from floor to floor, or, you know, which music room are you in? Are you on the first floor or the second floor, whatever? Been in that one art room that just looks like it's circa 1950. As it probably is. And, you know, I, I've gotten my head around, you know, the fact is, is, was previously, previously mentioned. This is work, this isn't like, you know, add-on, it's like, well, what else can we do then instead of? This is work that we, we would do. You know, if we recall, I mean, we took a fairly extensive walkthrough a couple of years ago in discussing what the next capital project may look like. And we had, we had briefly talked about the next capital project solely being Union Pleasant. I think one of the things we found out is, is through the MCA, through the maximum cost allowance, that that wouldn't make sense because we'd, we'd go, we'd blow past that. Anything we blow past is 100% on, on our taxpayers. So that's not an efficient use of, of, of time and money. So I, I think this is the, the right way to go in, in talking with them. If we give them, you know, the, the guidance to, to, our, our construction partners, give them the guidance to bid out $15 million worth of work instead of having it as alternate bids, you know? Here's, you know, if you want to do it, if, you know, here's, you know, you still have a chance to use the 5 million. Instead, say, you know, we're going to take the whole 15. That helps in the bidding process a little bit. Correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, I think that's kind of what I took out of the, our conversation, right?
Yeah, you don't want to have too many options.
Right, right. Right. But giving you, giving you the go-ahead for the 15, that gives you the ability to, to go out and, and like, and as you were telling us, you know, the contractors, they know they're going to do all the jobs. I mean, to your point, just using the example of the bathrooms, if you say, if you tell them, if they say, are we going to do all of them, or are you going to stop us at three? They want to do all, they want to do the whole, they want to do the whole thing. Yeah. So I think that it's, that, that, that building needs help. I'm, I'm supportive of it, and I think that I think the, the return on investment on that, I realize it's, you know, it's, it does affect the taxpayers. I also like the fact, as we, as we also discussed in, at our retreat, that through our financial consultant, coming up with a long-range financial plan for future capital projects and being able to level off that, that debt service level, you know, going forward, gives me a little bit more comfort as we, as we go down this road and always have that, that 10-year capital plan, which includes the financial planning aspect of it with, with a mind towards how does that affect our taxpayers? I think that's, I think that's being, you know, responsible with taxpayer money.
So it sounds like the general consensus is to look to the 15. I mean, my, my only reservations for wanting to stick to the 10 were we sat around a room and we said we were going to save some money for a pool. But that was a couple of years ago, and times have changed and costs have changed. And I think our, maybe our, our needs have, you know, we've shone a different light on what our needs are for our community. So it sounds like you guys should go ahead and march orders. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for the discussion, everyone. Okay. So moving on, we will move to item C4, which is our 2025, 2026 board goals. Now it's camp time to shine. So do I need to use a mic for the, for the video?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so I'm, I'm really doing this for the, the webex, right? Not the audience, probably? Okay. Well, hopefully I can project. So what are we doing here? So we met as a board about two weeks ago in our retreat, and we talked about some things. Now, retreats have to be relatively limited in, in what you talk about. We can't go in a retreat and set goals, and we can't go into a, a retreat and say, here's what our, our rules and guidelines are. But we can do brainstorming, we can do team building, and that's exactly what we did. So I'm going to share a couple of slides. The first one is the actual slide that, that sort of formulated our discussion in the retreat. And then the next three slides are the actual notes that we took together during that retreat. So this will be sort of putting that, that work on, on full display here and in full transparency. So when we got together, we set our objective here is to really set, create a set of guidelines and behaviors that we can all agree on. We've had some, some change in the board in the last couple of years, and we thought this was a great opportunity to sort of reevaluate our priorities as a board. And so what we wanted to do was have that brainstorming session, create some guidelines, review them in a public setting. That's what we're doing right at this moment. And then going forward, we would be able to hold each other accountable to adhering to these new agreed-upon behaviors and norms. So we reviewed a lot of material. We had some, our own internal board evaluation, which gave us some insight into how the board sort of views each other and how we operate. There are some historical best practice documents that have existed in the district for a while. NISBA puts out some guidelines, and then I think everybody sort of came to the table with some of their own ideas. Then we had a think, notice, wonder exercise, and that was kind of how we created the notes. And then the, the ask was for me to summarize and report back, and here we are. So I'm going to move pretty quickly through the next three slides. These are our notes. Think, what do I think, what do I notice, what do I wonder? So just a couple of highlights here, we all sort of agreed, the board should speak as one voice. We should be public, or present and visible in public. The chain of command is important, right? It's not our job necessarily to solve every problem, but to refer people to the person who can. Commuting, again, communicating to the public is very important. Um, commuting, uh, again, communicating to the public is very important. Um, being adherent to standards of ethics and conflict of interest. We all sort of agreed keeping student achievement as our prime focus i- is really an important value. What did we notice? Uh, we wanted to, uh, uh, it was common sentiment that a, a lot of, uh, board members wanted to stay active and informed on political events impacting our community. Um, we all need, uh, recognize we needed to be willing to collaborate on creating unified responses. We wanted to make sure, again, we were present in the community, but how could we organize ourselves around being present in the community? Um, how do we ask questions as we're preparing for meetings? Who gets to ask questions to whom and how do we do that? Um, a, a real positive, there was a, a lot of notice of, you know, we're all talking as we and us, which was very encouraging. And I think overall, the, the retreat was very productive in that regard. Um, and then, you know, again, a nod to, to the politics of the day. You know, while it's important that we be active on political events, you know, we have, we do have to be careful on how we're expressing that. And then what did I wonder? Um, what did I wonder? Not me necessarily, but somebody said, what does respect and etiquette look like? So we need to make sure that we, uh, sort of model those behaviors that we want our students and our staff to, to adhere to uh, and then understand that everyone's here with good intentions, right? Um, should we meet more often? How do we ask questions without micromanaging? How do we get more voice from our, from our student member, from Max and the, and the people who are gonna come after Max? Um, and then how do we continue learning? Should we, um, should we get into a regular cadence of, of getting building and department reports to the board? I think we're already starting to see some of that in the last couple of meetings. Um, and then again, engaging with the public, taxpayers, representing the community. How do we report at the board table? So lots of great feedback. So my job was to take all of this and those three, uh, sort of reports that we looked at and try to summarize it into a handful of, of sort of board norms. So I've pored over this, but you know, don't take that as a, uh, I'm married to all of this and I'm gonna be really offended if you wanna change it. This is my proposal for what I think our board, our, how our board should, should operate and what our guidelines should be. Ultimately, we all get to agree on this, right? So, uh, at the end of this meeting, I'm hoping we can, if we have some refinements, we'll make those and this becomes a public document that, that we hold each other accountable for. So each of these are structured the same way. Board members will, and then all of those, these comments sort of follow on that. I thought it was important that this was the, the first one. Board members will focus on the mission, vision, mission and vision, student achievement and commitment to the whole student. Uh, we need to ensure our district values are at the core of all our actions. Assume that everybody comes to each meeting and sharing that same intent. And we need to regularly discuss, review and affirm our commitment to our mission, vision and core values of Hamburg Central School District. If anybody feels strongly, just sort of raise your hand and interrupt me, otherwise I'm just gonna keep, keep plowing ahead here. Board members will be a constructive member of the team. So we need to recognize that our authority resides not in us as individuals, only in the actions of the board. Um, so we all need to respect that the board majority rules, right? You may not be on the winning side, so to speak, uh, but after the vote, we all agree we're gonna move forward together. Um, and again, sort of refrain from acting as that solo practitioner, you know, getting too in the weeds with, you know, the operations of the district or, or acting outside of what the direction or the, the actions of the board would suggest are appropriate. We need to respect our role and the role of others in the district. So this gets a little deeper into the idea of we don't manage the district. We actually manage the superintendent, whose job is to manage the district. So we would focus on policy goals and ensuring effective school operations. And really our, our accountability metric or, or vehicle is the performance evaluation of the superintendents. We'll do that annually or semi-annually and we'll hold he or she accountable for the operations of, of the district. Um, and that, you know, each of us will refrain from trying to perform management functions. That's a core tenet of, of a lot of the, the materials that we read. We agree we will all be prepared for meetings. We will review all materials prior to the, to the board meetings or your committee meetings. We'll come to the table having read whatever it is we've been asked to read or, or research and we will avoid surprises. So the idea is, you know, we don't wanna come here and have Mr. Adams or, or, uh, Ms. Kaney umming and ahhing because they didn't know we were gonna ask a question about something. We want them to be prepared to answer the question, maybe even answer it in advance so we can be efficient with the time here. Even though I'm still droning on here. Um, I think I've covered that one. Uh, model professionalism and respect at the board table. Uh, I think respect is an important word here, so we all need to be careful, right? We want our students to act the way we act or, or the way hopefully we act. Uh, so we need to speak respectfully, monitor our tone and body language. Ensure that when we speak, we're speaking about the issues and the facts, not the emotions or the people. Uh, we need to show a willingness to listen, remain open to persuasion and discussion, right? Come here willing to have your mind changed. I think that's, that's a good sign of, of a great board. Um, we need to be mindful of not interrupting each other, refrain from distracting behaviors like side conversations or excessive phone usage. Um, be respectful of time by sharing only relevant new information in honor of the board model for information sharing. This is a nod to the fact that we don't have yet a model for information sharing. So this would be something we would set together. Uh, attend our, our board and committee meetings, um, and be timely. Arrive on time or make sure if you can't be there that, uh, people are aware of that. Address professionally, maximize opportunities for student representation. This one, I struggled to sort of find the right place for that. I'd, I'd be willing to entertain a suggestion that this belongs somewhere else, but, um, you know, I think we've got the benefit of a student on our board in Max and, and we've had that, uh, at least for as long as I've been around. And I, and I think we need to, to do a better job of sort of helping bring the, the student members on board so they understand the expectations and maybe even, um, give them some homework, right? Go figure out what the students think about this or that. And I think we, we have an opportunity to improve in that, in that area. Engage with stakeholders in the district and the broader community. So this is a, you know, sort of a broader communication goal. Uh, recognize that we speak with one voice, which is typically Mr. Adams, uh, our superintendent. Um, and that superintendent represents the direction of the board. So it can be, you can sort of have to resist that urge to like restate everything in your version, right? When, when Mr. Adams speaks or occasionally maybe I'll speak on behalf of the board as the president. You know, we are speaking on behalf of the entire board. Uh, listens to questions and concerns from community members while recognizing the chain of command and educating stakeholders on the most effective path, right? It's that, that question in tops, you really wanna solve that, that problem that that parent has. But oftentimes you're not the best person. Have you talked to your teacher? Have you talked to your building principal? Have you talked to Mrs. Kaney or the special ed, uh, department, right? So oftentimes there's a, a chain of command that we need to educate people on their most effective path to get a resolution to their problems. Participate in committees and report irrelevant updates to the board. I think we're gonna do that in a few minutes. Uh, demonstrate an organized, coordinated effort to be present at school events. I think, I have no question, we're all going to be present at school events. Uh, so I think the new thing here is how do we be organized and coordinated at that? So that we are present at all the events. We don't miss anything or, or, you know, have all seven of us go to a particular basketball game or something just because we weren't coordinated. So we have some work there to do there in, in getting organized. Um, support regular, clear and consistent communication with the community using a variety of media. Um, and that would be at, at Mr. Adams' direction. And support a process for soliciting public input. Um, so that means looking at that input as well and reviewing how, where do we have opportunities to, to grow? And you notice this is a very open-ended bullet, right? It doesn't say we're gonna do a survey or we're gonna do phone calls or we're gonna, uh, poll people, right? It's, it may change, right? We have a lot of vehicles to do that. And I think you'll see how I, I think we can sort of immediately enact that through some goals with, for the district and for Mr. Adams. Maintain high ethical standards. Uh, I don't have a tremendous concern here, but I, I think it's important that we state it. Recognize that if we have conflicts of interest, we have, uh, tools at our disposal to recuse ourselves or abstain from votes where, um, where, where that's pertinent. Uh, we have to respect the confidentiality of our students and our staffs. We get oftentimes shared information in executive session that, that probably ought not to be public and we need to honor that. Uh, and we need to respect open meetings laws. So as we're talking about meetings and sort of preparing, we need to ensure that, you know, there are no, you know, inappropriate quorums or if there is a quorum discussion that, that that be shelved and the, and the public business be limited only to the public sessions. Fiercely advocate for action in the best interest of the Hamburg school community. So this is one, I, I maybe used a more colorful adjective than I, than I needed to here with the word fierce. But I think advocating for, for the actions in the best interest of our community is, is a pretty easy one to get behind. Um, how we do that is, is certainly up for debate. Um, so I think it's important that we all, uh, stay, stay informed on legislative activities affecting our community. But that before we sort of rush to action in that regard, that we discuss those opportunities for legislative action and, and make sure that when we write a letter or visit a, an important politician or, or, or take that, that specific action, that we're supporting the actions of the board as we've sort of laid out and agreed upon together as a board. Um, and then of course be wary that, to ensure that, you know, your personal political expressions remain exactly that. That, you know, when you, when you take those actions, that you reflect that that is your personal political opinion and not necessarily one of the board. If it happens to be one of those things where, where we have not discussed it and, and gained consensus, that, that that's in the best interest of, of the Hamburg school community. And then finally, keep learning. Uh, I think it's important that we model this behavior for our students, model lifelong learning. There's a lot of professional development opportunities that were afforded. Uh, I think it's important that we take advantage of those and that we share our participation in relevant learnings with the board at these meetings and, and with the superintendent and, and his staff, uh, if it's pertinent to, to their work. So, so that's where we're at from a guidelines perspective. Um, I'll pause there and see if there's anything I said that anyone would, would like to debate or enforce or edit or anything.
I do have one point. Um, first, I really appreciated the guidelines. I think that you did a great job.
Thank you. I put a lot of work into it, but don't take that, you can't critique it.
Uh, I would point out, one of the things under professionalism, you had dress professionally. Uh, that stuck out to me because professionalism professionally is one of those like, it's a, it's a very subjective term, um, that, that is subject to things like class, culture, context, et cetera. Um, I would hate for it to be, like, I imagine each one of us has in our mind what that means. I would hate for it to be a subject of debate at some point 'cause you can get into the weeds of that. Alternatively, as a proposal, we have in our code of conduct what it means to be like a dress code for the school. I think that acts as an appropriate, like, what do you mean by professional or what do you mean as appropriate? That technically covers a lot of things while still being conscious of things like income and, uh, suggestivity, things like that. Is something that stuck out in my mind that, honestly, was like the only thing that like, oh.
Yeah.
So I'll throw that out there.
I'll just sort of state my thought process there and then open it up. Um, so I, I, there are a couple of districts that publish similar documents like this and I, I perused those. Some of them said formal, right? Suit and tie sort of, you know, formality. And obviously that's, that's not what I intended. I think everyone here is dressed professional in, in my personal. I, I do think we should hold ourselves to a bit higher standards than we hold students. Might wear jogging pants and a t-shirt, sure. I, I do think this, this work has a degree of professionalism to it. I'm certainly open to what professional means in this context. But I, I, I personally, I think, I think maybe we should hold ourselves to a higher standard than what we hold students to.
I know that fourteen years ago when I was coming to meetings and I wasn't on the board, there was members that would wear shorts and t-shirts and I was disgusted by that, you know? And I brought it up, but, uh, I just, you know, we, we should act like, like professionals, you know? Um, and, uh, I think that we all know how to do that. I remember my father telling me years ago, if you're going to an event and you're wondering whether I should wear a sport coat, he said, wear it. Cause even if you're wrong and no one else has one, you're the classiest guy there, you know? And so you know what, I think we all know what professional means. I think it's a good term instead of formal.
Yeah.
You know, and, um, I don't think we have the set guidelines and, you know, all the, uh, all the ladies on our board are, are very classy and dressed very well, so I don't think that's a problem. So I, I think it's, professional is a good, uh,
I think our administrators dress professionally.
Yes, they do.
So we know we're coming into a room where our administrators are all dressed professionally. Um, and sort of modeling that as well.
I, I've set up my piece on it, so I won't say anymore.
Yeah. Any other feedback?
I think number nine, keep learning. You know that I, I've talked about this extensively and there's so many opportunities. The law conference, you know, I, I know you, you know, that anybody that attended that learned a lot. That's so important is that professional development, to keep on learning how to be a better school board, uh, member. And, uh,
Rising star, babe.
That's right.
Comment for ya. Taking that plaque.
All right, good, good.
The three probably already locked it up in month one.
Yeah, I think she's, oh yeah, you're, you're definitely getting one of those, so, yeah. She gets a shining star. But yeah, I just, it's so important, so.
Um, one thing I would say, because it was mentioned under a few of the, the slides, was regarding like, uh, legislative priorities and making sure they represent the board and not as an individual. That might be something good to talk about in July, maybe reorg meeting or before, just so we can get our priorities in line. Um, because even over the summer, meetings are happening, things are happening. Where I would definitely like to see Hamburg be represented, especially regionally at the state level. So I think just kind of finding a time for that discussion so that we can kind of lay out. I mean, obviously there's a lot going on right now that we can talk about. But overall, just things that are impacting schools, whether it be New York State or on a national level and where we kind of stand on that so that when we do take part in different trainings or meetings, whatever the case may be, we can speak on behalf of the board.
That's a good idea. Yeah, I think it's hard. We sort of take the opportunities as they come, right? Hey, somebody brings it up, is this the direction we support? Okay, go, let's write a letter, let's go all, let's do whatever the appropriate action is. Maybe we need to be more deliberate.
I think, I think utilizing, you know, what we already have, um, to do that. And I think it, it, it's something the board, with the ECS, but yeah, thank you. Uh, with ECSB, SB, EC.
You got it.
A S B, yeah. And, and NISBA. Um, you know, there's a lot of, um, opportunities to participate legislatively that, uh, pretty much we've already agreed with, um, you know, their platforms. Um, I mean, with, with NISBA, that's why we go through, uh, the annual vote. That's basically their legislative priorities that we, that we, we've all voted on and, and, and agree with. Um, and it also, uh, you know, as I, I think I mentioned in the, um, retreat, that, that gives you a, a bigger voice, uh, as a school board member. When you go with a larger group, then you're all advocating and all kind of, uh, pulling in the same direction with that. I think that, that's more meaningful. So I think we too, as far as, uh, legislatively being active, I think just being, making sure we're, we're, you know, that's a priority, that we're being more active in those, in those areas, I think is, if nothing else, a, a, a great start to.
It's probably our best ROI, right?
Yeah.
What we do on our own will get us so far.
Right, I mean, it's gonna be hard. I mean, you wanna get in front of a legislator or something by yourself, um, and you're, you're just advocating for, for a single district. Um, you know, you, hit or miss. I, you've got much better, uh, like I said, you got a much, uh, a bigger voice when you go in with, um, you know, ten or so, you know, board members from, from various, from the various districts or six that can worry. I mean, I've gone in with probably, probably not as many as ten, but like six-ish. Um, cause they'll make sure that you're, they're focused on, you know, if you're going to see, um, uh, Patrick Gallivan, that, you know, obviously all the districts represented are part of, part of Pat's, uh, part of Mr. Gallivan's, uh, districts. Um, in ECSB, you know, tries to, they do try to, um, arrange those. I mean, I've done meetings like that, you know, through ECSB with, with other district, with other board members. And, um, I, I think that's our most successful way to get our message out to those guys. All right?
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
And you did a great job of getting out of the retreat what, uh, the slides was great.
So the last, the last two slides, and I think these are the juiciest because, you know, this is really where we, we sort of set the tone for the year, right? I mean, obviously we have our core values and our core tenants, but what's gonna make this year a little bit different, right? What, what are our goals for Mr. Adams as our superintendent and for our district and for ourselves as a board? So here's my, here's my stab at that and I have two. One is to initiate the final phase. One is to initiate the final phase of our current capital project and complete the foundational work for the 2027 capital project. So I believe in SMART goals, which if anyone has has ever done performance evaluation, SMART is specific, measurable, actionable, realistic, and time limited, time bound. So I tried to sort of give us some ideas of, you know, obviously, I don't have all of that covered here. But, you know, how we might look at that is, you know, getting approval on the scope and budget of the current capital project's final phase. We took a big step in that regard just now. Initiate the work on that phase and identify the project schedule and expectations. Receive our building condition survey and evaluate that, you know, as far as how it might pertain to our next capital project, and then make sure we get that community input, right? It's going to take us longer than a year to get that project together, but I think that's a realistic set of steps that we could go through this year to ultimately outline that budget and scope for that next capital project. So that this year, next year at this time, we're sitting here talking about, you know, what is phase one or two, or maybe no phases of of the next capital project, and what are the big ticket items that that we're talking about marketing to the community when we want to put this up to the board? So that's that's goal number one. And then number two, the the highlight sounds a little fluffy, but the measurables get a little more into into specifics. But demonstrating our district's commitment to our mission to create, care, solve, and discover. So I use the word demonstrate here on purpose. I think it's a very important word. How do we talk the talk or walk the talk? Walk the walk, whatever, you know what I mean? How do we do more if we put our money where our mouth is?
Maybe that's about it.
So, you know, I think what we could do here is, you know, create a repeatable process to ensure, you know, the community feedback is both quantifiable and reviewed regularly with an idea of identifying those goals for improvement. I think that's something we heard loud and clear at the retreat. We need more data and we need more community validation, solicitation, however you want to look at that word. I know, Mr. Adams, this one's important to you, but introducing mental health screening to ensure the safety and well-being of all our students. I mean, I think that's at a core of our of our mission to create, care, solve, and discover is are they are they safe? Are they feeling joy, value, and connection? And then host regular presentations that provide, again, as quantifiable as possible, evidence of our commitment to providing students with a diversity of opportunities for connection, right? Clubs, sports, extracurriculars, but also the district's evolving approaches to curriculum, right? How do we how do we teach math from kindergarten to AP Calculus, right? So I think if we can get in a cadence, personally, I I'd love to see us get in a cadence of, you know, understanding how the district responds to all of those needs, both outside of, you know, core curriculum, but also part of the core curriculum, right? I mean, that's ultimately our job here, right, is can they, you know, do we teach them math and do they know how to read? That's really important, and we can't make sure make sure we don't lose sight of that while we're also making sure that, you know, they're feeling engaged at school and and all of those aspects. So that's my proposal. Mr. Adams, you and I have obviously talked about it, and I think you're generally in favor of the direction. But again, this is the the opportunity for us to discuss that, because we'll, whatever we decide on here, we will take away, and that will become, will work its way into the performance review and probably into the performance review of many other people.
I I appreciate it like that. I know it's been said before, but the amount of time that 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 the board took to discuss things at the retreat and the amount of thought that and effort that Cam put into creating this and being thoughtful. And like you, you hear the 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 priorities of the district that have been sung for for years about those coming through, and we really have, you know, it's it's challenging. Like, the idea of coming up with, like, you know, I'll point to Mary, like, man, what is Mary Luck? Mary Luck's that. Mary Luck's that, right? Hey, like, that's like the idea of the measurable. And defining what it means to be a success is not like, this has always been the district that refuses to put to put there back in the rankings days, that that ranking was never going to be on the top of the letterhead. Never. Never, the the rankings would be there, they'd be great, but it was never going to be the end all and be all of this. And this is our time to really decide what it is, what are those measurables that say whether or not we're achieving this idea? This this vision of care, create, self-discover. Discover 2021 is there because of care, create, self-discover. The idea is that every kid has a chance to be able to discover what moves them, what impassions them. And that's what we're trying to carry on with this. So that's a that's a that's a challenge that, it's interesting. We always feel cha, I always feel challenged by the work, but when it's articulated like that, like this, sometimes it becomes more definable what you're going after. And and that's a that's a that's a hopeful thing and a daunting thing, but that's good. We should be challenged.
Good. Glad to hear you don't.
No, not at all, not at all.
Because I always got something to say. I love this. This is, when I say like I love data, almost more than I love data, I just love it. I love documentation, I love a direction, I love a essentially a learning outcome with an objective. So I don't necessarily need an answer to this, I'm not looking for an answer to this. This is the where we're going, this is the objective. I would absolutely say a hundred percent yes. My, the thing I would love to talk about another timetable it. To ensure that the measurables, objectives are measured, what is going to be, let's talk about the protocol for collecting this data. So what is the repeatable process? Who will be in charge of it? Is it going to be all of us? Is it going to be one of you? Is it is it going to be delegated amongst the administration? I would love to get into a deeper conversation about standard operating procedures. And then when will we report on it? Like, clearly, I am vested for bureaucracy, because I love it. But I, that to me is like, how do you hold it? How do you hold yourself accountable to make sure that we are just saying, these are our goals? And then we get here next time and go, still, still our goals, thumbs up.
Right.
So that's, that's, I don't need an answer, but that's my next.
I mean, I I think that's ultimately what we're putting on your shoulders at this.
Right.
Cool.
Okay. Well, eight thirty, we're.
I know.
Still not anywhere close to the Ash.
You get to leave by nine.
Okay.
Max can sleep by nine.
Max is driving.
He can't leave, he can't drive, and he gets laid by nine.
It's nothing to do with hard knocks.
I'll write you a letter. Okay. So thank you, everyone, for that discussion.
I did.
I feel I feel happy that my my time was invested well and we had a good discussion. So board board briefings, really not too much to comment on there. Future Board of Education meetings, actually freshly edited, it looks like. Our next meeting will be at the high school. There's a conflict at Armour, it was originally scheduled here. And then in October, we're going to start the the circuit and we'll go to Charlotte. Meeting, work meetings and workshops. Not sure if anyone's going to the superintendent evaluation workshop or the back-to-school dinner. Is anyone going to the back-to-school dinner?
I might, I'll let you know.
I think you need to, Dave sent a, Dave Lowery sent a message like, hey, it's last call.
Send him a message.
Okay. Budget transfers, informational. We had a first reading on two policies around virtual instruction, not to be not to be confused with remote instruction, and notification on employee discipline records. And now we will move to board committee and individual reports. And so that he can get out by curfew, we'll start with you next. Thank you for sitting through all of this.
Oh, it's fine.
Good learning.
I just got to get used to it.
It's not usually this.
It's a marathon, not a sprint.
So we had our student government meeting with our advisors yesterday. We had that at the Comfort Zone, and we just went over our calendar. So the two things I want to highlight from that are that we plan on doing Threaded Together again. So it could be tough to do and tricky, because we also have Ball for Bucks next year. So but we think we have a possible date that could work, but we need to get all our ducks in a row before we actually like, you know, can confirm anything. We also really want to do a pep rally that could like tie with, you know, winter and spring sports and also Ball for Bucks. So that's still being worked on. For homecoming, so the theme for homecoming, we have superheroes. And for the parade, the band and trucks will line up at five, and then the parade will start at six. We got our.
Do you want to share the date with that?
The date?
Yeah. September nineteenth. It's all right?
Yeah, right, I think so, yeah.
Just checking my thinking.
We got our sphere days approved for the week of homecoming. So Monday is going to be class colors. So Tuesday and Wednesday can interchange, because that's when the pep rally might fall. We don't know if it's Tuesday or Wednesday yet. So on the day of the pep rally, it's going to be purple and white. And the elder alternative is country or country club.
I love that. It's hilarious.
Thursday is going to be USA, and then Friday will be superhero to pair with the homecoming dance. And that's all I have.
Excellent. Great update.
Thank you.
Can I can I give you some homework?
Sure.
Next meeting, tell us what we can do to support you for Threaded Together.
Sure, all right.
Do you need volunteers? Do you need materials? You love to help, all right?
Thank you.
Thanks, Max. I don't know, let's mix it up. I think last week I went this way, I'm going to start with Jessica, because I know she has a lot to talk about.
I do. So it was busy this last month. New York State School Board Association, they offer a program for new board members called Accelerate. So there's monthly modules you can go ahead and participate in. So there were three last month and two this month. Welcome to NISBA, new school board member essentials, school board committees, email usage, and social media. So those were just like three snapshots, those were great. I want to say thank you to everybody who helped make the retreat a really great day. I think that we all learned a lot and walked away feeling better about the work we're going to do together. I also got to join a federal advocacy webinar. It was jointly hosted by the New York State School Board Association and the National School Board Association. It was really great to get the differing perspectives from a state level and then a national level on how HR1 could impact public schools. So that was really great to get that information, kind of understand how we can best advocate for our kids here. And then I also was able to attend the Erie County Association of School Boards Law Conference last week. Mary and I, we divided and conquered, because we decided to go to different breakout sessions. So I attended board governance, pitfalls, and ex officio membership. I was also able to sit in on a special education breakout session, and it discussed recent court cases regarding the June first defense, FATE 22, and then legal action for parents of students with disabilities. The third one I went to was the Knuts and Bolts of Capital Projects, and they discussed a lot. It was talking about contracts and competitive bidding and piggybacking, all these terms that I was not familiar with, but I wanted to familiarize myself with. It was a great general discussion in the beginning with a panel, talking about a lot of things that are impacting us. The biggest topic of discussion was the cell phone policy, and that was a really great day with a lot of information. I'm super excited. I think Mary is also, this Thursday, we are headed on a Zoom. You headed on that Zoom with me? With Congressman Lang, we're the.
Oh, that's right.
So we will be on there as part of the advocacy portion of our board work, so that will be on Thursday. So I'll be excited to report back how that goes at our next meeting. There's a whole list of from the New York State School Board Association on the topics that they have prioritized regarding HR1 and impacts and regional, but also national. So they've sent out kind of a guideline for discussion and topics they want to address with them, all related around HR1 and how that's going to impact public schools.
Sure, it'd be super satisfying.
You know what? Any chance I can get to talk to somebody about how we can make sure we take care of our kids and our teachers, I'm there.
I appreciate that. Thanks, Jess.
Me? All right. So I actually prepared a template for a board report, as we've talked about, for myself. If you like this, you just reach out to me later to help me.
I'm not sure I like the small font.
No, it's it it ignore that. So.
I was kidding.
Events that I attended to our last report were, I watered the Giving Garden at U P E S. I did not have a chance to meet many of the public there, shocking. I attended the board retreat, excellent, and I also went to the Western New York Educational Law Conference. And you were also there for the hottest second, so I just want to also give a shout out. We were all there for a hot second. So at the board retreat, the only thing, this is a list of outcomes and items I wanted to bring to your attention that I thought would be relevant. We discussed what we wanted to prioritize, obviously, we already talked about this. I just want to remind everyone that I did volunteer to take whatever we decided to formally put together in terms of goals. I'm happy again to do the rubric for our own Super Eval once we decide on that, if that is still something that makes sense. Happy to do it. And remind that I still think it's a good idea to plan something like this in the springtime. You did address it, I just want to readdress it. Regarding the Western New York Law Conference, I I went to completely different sessions than my colleagues, so I don't want to talk about all of them. I really just want to talk about the things that stuck out in my mind. Really big thank you to Erie County Association of School Boards and the U B Law School and all the presenters for doing it, because it was less of a conference that I am used to and more of just like an all-day lecture. Just here's some free legal advice. It was incredible. So here are the things. One, they talked about zero admission, admission school bus extension, just bringing this to your attention, that permits, it it permits the Commissioner of Education to grant two extensions of twenty-four months each to the 2027 electric-only purchase requirement. However, districts granted such waivers must annually meet with NYSERDA for assistance in implementing this transition. Y'all probably know this, but I'm bringing it to the greater board's attention. We have to be showing that we are actually like engaging with NYSERDA for us to qualify for these extensions, or we will not qualify for these extensions. So keep that in the back of your mind. Two, this has not been signed into law, but I thought it was interesting, relevant to technology. My baby. It's called the Automated Decision Making in Government Agencies. This bill, again, not yet signed, but it's sitting here, waiting to be signed. Is a, it's very long, but my layman's interpretation of it is that districts that use AI are going to have to report when they use it and conduct an impact assessment of it, and that using it will cannot impact the existing rights of employees pursuant to an existing collective bargaining agreement. So in other words, basically, it's an attempt to make sure that we are protecting our faculty and staff, and they can't just be like replaced Duolingo style, which I personally strongly would support that the New York State, I personally, Mary Oden, supports the idea that the state is thinking about the employee impact of AI for people that work here. What happens to it is yet to be seen, but the fact that the state is thinking about it for our staff and faculty, I think, is progressive. I like that. The last thing I want to bring up, because I just think it's important, is I went to a session called Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion under the Trump administration, and this was a very comprehensive explanation of the impact of the five executive orders that the Trump administration has put out this spring that were directly targeting diversity, equity, and inclusion. I personally, and based on the attendance of this session, many other folks had a lot of questions about this and how we as a New York district need to be prepared for these executive orders. And this session was so, so helpful in laying all of this out, so I want to pass this information to you as succinctly as I can. So first, just that in the U.S. Constitution, some things are exclusively fed governed by federal law, some things are exclusively governed by state law, some things are both. Education is currently both. If there is a conflict in the two laws, federal, Trump's state, Trump's local. But executive orders are not laws, nor can they override or modify federal or state laws. But they may direct executive departments or agencies to prioritize or de-prioritize certain laws for congressionally created programs. So Congress, federal Congress, would need to pass a law to override a state law. New York State and our constitution, and therefore DASSA, which is Dignity for All Students Act, takes precedence, because there is no federal law. takes precedence because there is no federal law. However, I urge everyone at this table and listening to just be very aware because the Department of Education, which is a federal agency, that staff has not only been significantly reduced, but remains has, but what remains has significantly shifted its operations to be uh, proactive in enforcing the administration's understanding of civil rights. Uh, and uh, the big takeaway is that uh, the example that was given is that uh, the Office of Civil Rights announced a finding in the California Department of Education uh, that the, that it violated, that the California Interscholastic Federation violated Title Nine by discriminating against women and girls on the basis of sex by permitting students to participate in sex segregated sports based on their gender identity. This is relevant because this was not against California's state constitution, which is in many ways similar to New York's. California is not complying, so they're being sued by the government. The big takeaway was that nobody brought this complaint to the Office of Civil Rights. They sought it out. The lawyers that gave this presentation uh, basically said, you need to be aware that this, they are being more proactive and that it is important for us as school board and for all of us to know what the law is and that we should make sure we are understanding that what our New York State law is, but be aware that the climate is different. And to just be paying attention to it. To your point, we have a, a duty to know our, our laws, but also be paying attention to what is happening around us. And it was a very intense session. So I appreciate everybody listening intently to that very long report, but I felt obligated to share that specific detail. My action items for the future is blank. That's my template and that is my board report. Thank you for being patient.
Thank you. Tom?
I'm gonna be real brief. I just had a couple of things. We did the, the retreat, which we've already covered, which is great, and the facilities committee, which we also pretty much covered, so.
I'll be brief as well. I was um, at a law conference. I was in the same session um, that Mary was. Um, I love when my professional life and personal life uh, or board work merge. And so I was um, extremely interested in the case law shocker around suspensions and um, student behavior and the changes that were um, coming. And every time I listen to it, I always think that Hamburg's ahead of the game. We've used restored practices for a while. Um, we don't do exclusionary discipline and um, just makes me very proud to be on a board that um, backs those uh, findings that are so important for our kiddos, keeping them in school. Um, also, um, the strategic planning that Cam and I were at was as usual fantastic. It's a, it's always wonderful to have our, all the stakeholders in one room together. Um, I had the privilege of sitting with the um, armor table. So the, the um, each um, building creates their own goals or what their focus is gonna be. And so I was able to be a part of that discussion, which I loved. And I loved our, our icebreaker with the candy. I used that at my school. Um, and then one of the highlights of my summer that I've been doing for years now is being able to um, lead the circle at our administrative retreat, which was the day after strategic, our strategic planning. And um, I love that for so many reasons. I'll, I'm always um, grateful for the discussions that are had, for the sharing that's had and also to see that every single administrator is so focused on um, students and the wellbeing of the students in their building and their passion for education always comes through. And I walk away from that every year just feeling so grateful to have had the opportunity. Um, board retreat, amazing. Thank you for your work and I think that's it.
Dave, you wanna go off the last?
Okay, um, I don't have anything to discuss about my committees, but um, the music boosters. Um, we had a fundraiser, they had a fundraiser, they're all here. So I just see them all out there. And uh, um, and we raised some money, so we'll be buying more of those um, goodies. What were they called? Docuspiel, so might be more or something else maybe. But now is time to sign up and join the music boosters. Um, so you can just go to the website, right? Yeah, and uh, we have a website, just look up music boosters and join. Um, because we're gonna, they are gonna do a lot of wonderful things almost every week. And uh, but they, they, what a great group. They're sitting through this meeting, which is, God bless them for that. But uh, but you know, make sure, it would be great to uh, if everybody would join. And uh, and also, we're gonna be doing a lot more with the music boosters and we'll have some more reports for you. And then don't forget to sign up for the PTSA. So now's the time, get your membership in, so we don't have to shame you later on.
I think uh, I think Miss Spider has a QR code.
Yeah. She has no QR code.
Pass it around.
Which is currently with her, so as long as they don't fall asleep. But I, and I know that she is all for the improvements in the music room in Union Pleasant. So, that's all I have.
Alright, thanks Dave. Uh, I'll be brief. Uh, so IDA, we have a meeting at eight, uh, seven-thirty tomorrow morning. So I will see Sean again. We're working on a large land sale, which is very exciting out uh, in the Gateway Property area. Uh, strategic planning in the retreat, we're already covered. I just wanted to close with, with uh, an observation. Yesterday, played with Mr. Flynn in the alumni, name of the alumni golf tournament. Mr. Adams, Ms. Kane, Jordan, we're all there. His team was there. Uh, what a great event. I mean, we played it every year, but um, this year was special because they crossed the million dollar threshold. So they've now donated a million dollars to our school district, including uh, as Keith said yesterday, over four hundred thousand in capital project investments. Um, in two hundred fifty thousand, which we're, we have to play with right now. Um, and then, you know, obviously a number of different projects over the years. So just super appreciative of, of the support of that group um, in, in many, many diverse ways. I just wanted to acknowledge that for that. So uh, with that, we have one more report before we get into the business. Um, and it's from our superintendent. Is there any introduction you need or?
No, I'm, I'm gonna go through my report. We're gonna have, uh, we're gonna go to an enrollment report brief. I've got a couple of things to say first. Um, got several things to, to offer, um, but to appreciate everybody's contribution uh, with things tonight. Um, there's always that level of, uh, for me anyway, always that level of like, it's a board meeting night. It's a board meeting night. Get yourself ready, do good. Uh, get people, you know, prepare the information they need and uh, just really thankful to be, to be part of it. Um, since we last met, I've been able to take part in strategic planning, uh, our administrative retreat and our board retreat. Uh, many hands make light work and the amount of thought and preparation that went into making those days worthwhile isn't something that I take for granted. Uh, if there's a theme that I think ran through those days, it's the idea from our core values that we have pride in our past and we're committed to our future. Uh, that's an easy phrase, it sounds nice, but it really is quite a challenge. Uh, as you saw, I brought some posters that we unearthed at district office uh, and put them around the, the walls here. Uh, and I think it shows that same sentiment, uh, proud of who they were at the time, but ever moving forward. Uh, whether that's with building construction, policies, programming for kids. Uh, the reason why we're proud of our past isn't because it was stagnant, it wasn't stationary. It was ever-changing and ever-evolving. Change then is not a rejection of the past, but a reflection of it. Uh, my thanks to those who contributed to the planning of the board retreat. That was a team of Laura, Ashley and Tom. And then Cam for uh, the role that he played in uh, in, in directing a portion of that. Uh, and then for tonight and for Laura for kicking off our admin retreat as well. I'm, I'm gonna go to enrollment now. Uh, and every year during budget development, in March, we set out what we think that the enrollment is going to be. And then we go to monitor that. It sort of makes, it, it allows us to, to plan what our staffing levels will be. Um, and I just wanna make sure I'm working here. My phone, there we go. My phone, this, this way, Cam and my, George? Can you just advance the slide? Yeah, right. I, just as a reminder what our class size guidelines are, pre-K through two. We go up to twenty-two students per class is a guideline. Uh, grades three through five, uh, we look at twenty-three through twenty-eight. With those guidelines in mind, we're looking at two, a few different areas caught our attention. Uh, and when I say our, you know, this is work that other people are doing sort of more granularly. Uh, I'm part of it. Uh, but as we, we look, we, there were some things that caught our attention. One was at Union Pleasant. We can go to the next slide on that. Uh, well, there's two, sorry, there's three things. Forgot my slide order. Uh, so we have Charlotte and Union Pleasant. Charlotte, we're looking at kindergarten and we're looking at grades three and grade five. I should have done a comma there instead of a dash. And then Union Pleasant, we're looking at grade five. Uh, I'm gonna move us to the next slide, which I believe will be Union Pleasant, it's a better way of doing it. Uh, and as you can tell, like, so that monitoring takes place over the course of, from March through June is a loose form of monitoring. As you head towards July though, um, these are like, sort of like the weekly uh, inputs that are, uh, we're, we're doing based on the enrollment. And you can see as we look for, this is for fifth grade and we redacted teacher name and room number and such. Um, but we went up from July tenth, we had one hundred and one in the fifth grade. Then we went to one oh two and then we went down to one oh one again. So at the present time, uh, we've got twenty-five in three sections and we've got twenty-six in another. Uh, and that brings us to the one oh one. So we're within our guidelines there for Union Pleasant. We can go to our next slide now. And then you take a look at Charlotte and I'll take a look at fifth grade first. I'll go bottom to top because the top one's got a bit of a, of a different feel to it. Um, for grade five, uh, for Charlotte, we started off with twenty-five in each of the two sections. That's maintained throughout. So even though that was on our mind with this, we're monitoring it, we're entering it every week, uh, taking a look at things and that remains within guidelines. Grade three started off as twenty-six in each of the two sections for fifty-two students. That's maintained throughout, uh, as the last entry was uh, was August seventh there. Uh, so that remains, uh, you're looking at that, you're four away from being at, at maximum twenty-eight and twenty-eight. Kindergarten's a little bit of a different story. It came in light, like, no, there, there's no other way of really, there's another way of saying it, I suppose. But it came in lighter in terms of numbers than we expected. So uh, as we were looking, we were, well, we anticipated three sections and that's really turned to two sections as that twenty-eight number maintained throughout. Now your question is where did that teacher go? Uh, that was teacher who was in a long-term sub position. There's another teacher, another HTA member who's on leave and that uh, long-term sub who was gonna be in that kindergarten role is going to that position. Uh, with, with like, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll have a, we'll have a spot, uh, but in a, in a different, in a different role. Um, those are the types of decisions. And I say this and I'm like, there, I don't know if there's things like, for, for some people listening and some people watching right now, there's nothing more important than what I'm sharing right now. Uh, cause it impacts their child who's going into that grade and I want to acknowledge that. And the thing I'm gonna say right now isn't about trying to, I know this is not what's being said, but I just wanted to tell you that like, it's the, it's, it's a little bit of the trust the process feel for me here. It's that notion that we've had these guidelines for some time and they've, when we say they've proven to work, it's not to say that you don't have to make adjustments to that sometimes, but they've proven to work at the, a, as we, as we do our planning. And then as things go on throughout the year, I really have a great amount of faith in our staff who are in these classrooms. I got a great amount of faith in our building level administrators and assistants that they have in place and the fact that they will talk to us too. And it won't be uh, somebody calling me and saying, Tom, this isn't working. It will be a call to somebody like Colleen or somebody like Brent and saying, help me be my thought partner here, help me work through this. This type of, this situation, you know, we're struggling in this spot. Can, can you, can you be my thought partner about what we can do to support the learners here? I, just because I go in with a lot of faith about this all working, I know that it's going to cause, you know, concern for some folks when they hear that there's not an additional class that's being added. But our guidelines have, have, have brought us this far. I think it's a very, very good place that we're in. And so that's what I'm presenting to you with regard to the areas of concern for us. Okay, so I wanted to go over that piece in terms of that enrollment. And that's available, uh, that, that will be available to, to you as well, um, that, that document. Um, the next thing I wanted to talk about was transportation. Alright, and you know, even though like, this is sort of like in my report, there certainly can be questions and discussed, like, questions following, okay? So I just want that to be, to be known as well. Um, with regard to transportation, there's some talk about UPK, about Universal 3K and our, uh, our uh, commitment to transporting them via bus. Um, that's going to continue. Uh, I don't feel like I've got the direction or desire to say at this late stage that we're going to change that in terms of UPK. There's no doubt that the adable quality of that, of the adable component of that uh, is a cost factor. Like, there's no doubt that there's more, it costs more for UPK when it ran with three buses than it does now. Um, I do want to make mention of the fact, some of the Christine shared with me, there is a bill, it's not being acted on, uh, in the state senate about the idea of aiding those pupils, of, of providing transportation aid for UPK. We're not there yet, it's not something that we can count on and certainly not this year and probably not next, based on what we're hearing. But it is something that is being discussed and I think it is, um, I'm, I'm proud to be part of a district that is, that, that's made such a, a commitment along those lines. Now, there is a reduction in, for, for UPK, there's a reduction uh, in, in, in some of the midday bus runs. There is a, there is not a corresponding increase, but there's an increase in one of the full day, the AMPM runs um, with that, because we've got another full day section of UPK, which takes away from the A, from the, uh, from the midday pickup in one. So that takes away uh, from, from some of those midday runs. So uh, you know, I'm not suggesting that's gonna be a massive cost savings, uh, but that will, that will, that will help. In terms of what we'll call homeschool transportation, which is that separate contract, which is, you know, the bulk. That's what we think of. We think of those buses that are on the road, taking the kids in the morning, pick them up from, uh, like who are doing the, who are doing the full day of, of school. We've taken a look at things now and we are planning there to have a two-run decrease, a two-bus decrease, to go from thirty-seven to thirty-five. Alright, again, with the increase we're paying in transport, it's not gonna be like running around saying, we saving so much money. But it does help with that cost. That's not including the fact that at the beginning of the year, we're gonna be doing our rider audit. Uh, that's gonna be making sure we know how many kids are getting on the bus in the morning or how many kids are getting off the buses at the beginning of the day and how many are getting on at the end. From there, and I'm not gonna get into the prediction uh, mode with it, but we do anticipate that there'll be some opportunities to perhaps do some combining of bus runs and perhaps limiting that uh, even more. Not a guarantee with it, but that's my, my anticipation that we'll be able to do that. I think, I think it's wise in the case of an audit to begin that after the initial start of the school year, just because there are things sometimes don't always work out the same uh, in those first few days um, based on um, you know, parent driving habits and priorities along those lines. But I think like, I, I think as we, as we head into the middle, middle part of September, that's when that ridership audit will take place and things. And that's the, that's the type of thing that I am charged to, to make sure that I'm monitoring um, with, with that. Uh, so I wanted to, to let you know about those two items um, with that. Uh, why don't I go through um, the other items that I have and I can take questions that, that, that folks might have, okay? Um, I wanted to let you know about the reserve funds. I shared that via email uh, to the board. Uh, those are items you'll be, that'll be acted on tonight. If you have questions about that, certainly you can ask those questions either at that time or at the conclusion of my remarks here. Uh, remember, those are the reserve funds that we apply towards our dedicated reserves, such as capital reserve, such as unemployment reserve, retirement reserve. Um, that is over and above the four percent unassigned fund balance that we're able to use sort of as our savings account as we go into this, this school year. And we're at that four percent, we're saving as much as we are allowed to by the controller. So that's a, that's a, from my chair now, that makes me feel real good. For as many times as I've heard about that and it didn't really have, make an impact on me, it feels real good to know that we're saving that four percent uh, as we move forward into the school year. Uh, you may have heard about Deja's Law uh, regarding cardiac emergency plan that needs to be in place. We will have that in place. Uh, it needs to be uploaded to the portal uh, in, for the state by January, but we'll have that plan in place and that'll be communicated um, with our staff as well to make sure that our staff knows what to do in the case of a cardiac emergency. Uh, I'm just coming off uh, first aid CPR AED training uh, with all the administrators uh, that we took part in. Chris Zemreck, uh, who's our EMT teacher at the high school, led us through that. Uh, it's an important thing to be doing, really important and uh, glad to be, to be part of that. of that. I wanted to share with you that through a grant from the Buffalo Bills, we're able to, we're able to ask you for support of funding a unified flag football team that would start, like, right away in the fall. We're looking at fall, winter, spring now for unified sports for high school, so we, we're covering each of the seasons, which is a tremendous thing. I'll be sharing with you information about something known as regionalism. This was a topic that came up at a board meeting, I believe, like, last winter, prior to my being in this chair. It's something that we, there's a regionalism series of meetings that, that a few of us went to with Erie One Boses. It is an effort to try to not combine schools or anything along those lines, but to make sure that we're talking to each other about best practices. The categories that we talked about, and that we will eventually need to attest that we're open to talking to other school districts about, is looking at graduation measures, which I'll talk about in a moment. Absenteeism and social-emotional learning, community partnerships, transportation, course offerings, family support centers, teacher certification, extracurricular, and community support for all students. It's a, it's a way of bringing together different folks who represent different districts and saying, "Hey, we offer this," or, "Hey, we have these few students who are going to this place. Why don't we work together to try to make some savings on that?" So not just for the efficiency sake, but an equity sake, too, to make sure that kids in, going through, no matter what district they're going to, that they attend, that they, they would have similar comparable offerings with that. So that's really just getting its sea legs going right now, but, but that's something that I'll share more with you about in, in September. The, the last thing I shared with you, you should have had a hard copy, a hard copy, blue sheet, yep, blue sheet, that's what I'm looking for. This is a blue sheet of paper, Portrait of a Graduate. This is something that we've talked about at strategic planning, it's something we've talked about administrative retreat. We are in the initial installment phase of this. This is through, think of an overall umbrella called New York Inspires, and this talks not only about graduation measures and how those, we're looking to shift those. We saw an initial component of that come through just this June with what they call hardship waivers for students who, because of circumstances, were exempted from some of their New York State exams, or there was a process that each district could put in place for that. But this is, this is the new, the new focus for state ed, and I, and I think they're really taking a thoughtful approach to it. What I would suggest, and the Hamburg side of things, is to not think of it as Portrait of a Graduate so much, because that to me implies finality. Like, a portrait seems like it's finished work. A graduate might seem like it's finished work, although we know that they're not, like, just like we're all not. So we've been toying with the phrase "pathway of a learner," but it really talks about six attributes that we're looking for our students to be able to experience as they go through their time here with us, and that is to be able to demonstrate that they're a global citizen, a creative innovator, effective communicator, a critical thinker, academically prepared, reflective and future-focused, and that's all within what they're calling a culturally-responsive sustaining framework. And a definition for that last part is really underneath the image there. So I share this with you, not to say, "Hey, we're implementing all of this this year," but this will become a big part of what our discussions are, whether you're talking about department meetings, staff meetings. We've already had some of these discussions at strategic planning, and it's certainly what we'll be talking about as part of our administrative cabinet councils here. So I just wanted you to get a, a little bit of a, of a window into that. They came out with their more revised framework of it on the same day that we had strategic planning, which was timely. And, and, and so, like, we're just getting our arms around it, but we think that there's, one of the things that excites me about it is the same thing that excites me about our goals. Like, the idea of being able to define for us, for Hamburg Central, what makes for a successful student experience? What sorts of things show that a student has achieved proficiency mastery, if you wanna use those terms for it? That's not just how'd I do on my US history regions in nineteen eighty-nine. Like, it's more than that, and that's what we want to. I think it's, it's a chance to put, money where our mouth is, right? Like, it's, it's an, it's our, it's our chance to put a stake in the ground of what we've been saying for over a decade. Our vision is to educate modern learners who, modern thinkers who create, care, solve, and discover. This is our way of, of perhaps measuring that. So it's exciting that those things are coalescing like that. I've talked about a few different things here. That is a, like, conclusion of the, sort of, dot points that I have. But if you had questions or things that you wanted to share, based on what I, what I, what I said, certainly open to that those now.
I had a, I had a question with the rider audit.
Yep.
I sense, and I just wanna say it out loud, so you can confirm, that we're willing to make changes to bus routes to that, you know, mid-year based on that rider audit. So in simple terms, if we discover that although many kids are eligible to take a bus, none of them do, or a few of them do, we're willing to consolidate that route with another route.
We're willing to have, yeah, and we also.
And Fisher's a mentor to that, too.
Yeah, we're also recognizing that that would require, you know, that's gonna take further conversation, like, who else, who else needs to know? We're gonna need to involve other people in that conversation, but absolutely. That'll be our, our first window into, yes, this is, this seems like a possibility. Now, we don't wanna make it a ninety-minute run, either.
No, I appreciate.
I know you're not saying that, but I just want you to know, like, there, like, that's one of the, that's absolutely a big factor.
I'm just trying to figure what we can expect with riding, some sort of mid-year grand announcement, like, "Hey, we lost two more buses."
Well, and it's, and it shouldn't be mid-year, you know, like, we should be able to take a look at that fairly quickly.
Right, okay.
Okay, thank you.
I was thinking in terms of what we talked about at the table, you know, I think we mentioned being very cognizant of the taxpayer when we talked about those numbers with the capital project, and socioeconomic was brought up, and I think it makes me even more thankful that we have transportation for UPK, because we have a lot of families that are relying on that. They're not paying for private preschool, but it is gas money to go to and from places, so I'm just, I'm extremely thankful that that's something Hamburg's offered. I just wanted to say that again, because it's, to me, it shows that we greatly care about the kids in our community.
Any other questions for Mr. Adams?
I don't know if you'll have it, but I know you said there was some reduction in busing for UPK and for home-to-school. Do we have an approximate, like, savings amount? I know the total figure to start was like eight-twenty, additional beyond what we were expecting.
Right, right.
With these savings, where are we at?
I can, I can get that for you. Yeah, I'm not sure, like, the per bus, but I will get, and I'll, and I'll work with my friend here, right, to get that information.
Anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. I'm sure we've covered it.
Impressive yourself.
Necessarily, so that wasn't, that wasn't meant to sound sarcastic.
Maybe I was internalizing my own.
All right, so we'll move into consent items. At this time, any board member can make a request to withdraw a specific item for individual consideration. Is there any such request from items F or G? Okay, C, none. Can I have a motion to approve all consent items F two through G four?
So moved.
Second. So moved by Dave, second by Tom. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Move to H one. Can I have a motion to, to approve revised salary schedules for part-time and substitute personnel for the 2025-26 school year? So moved by Laura.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. H two, MOA with the HTA. Can I have a motion to approve an MOA between the Hamburg Teachers' Association and Hamburg Central School District regarding a new interscholastic coaching sport?
So moved.
So moved by Jess, second by Laura. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. H three, can I have a motion to approve the district's safety plan for 2025-26 school year as presented at the July eighth twenty-five meeting?
So moved.
So moved by Mary.
Second.
Second by Laura. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. H four, can I have a motion to conduct, to approve rather the revised twenty-five, twenty-six district code of conduct?
So moved.
So moved by Mary.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. H five, can I have a motion to approve the new policies fifty-eight forty and fifty-six eighty-five as submitted?
So moved.
So moved by Laura.
Second.
Second by Jess. Any discussion on these? We did review these as a policy committee, if that makes anyone feel better. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. H six, can I have a motion to approve revised, revised policies fifty-six eighty-one, fifty-six eighty-three, and seventy-two twenty-three as submitted?
So moved.
So moved by Mary.
Second.
Second by Laura. Any, oh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. H seven, can I have a motion to approve change order three oh one dash oh one for capital project phase three work?
So moved.
So moved by Laura.
Second.
Second by Jess. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. H eight, can I have a motion to approve the bids for AC units as listed?
So moved.
So moved by Laura.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. H nine, can I have a motion to approve the bid for an F three fifty super duty truck as listed?
So moved.
So moved by Laura.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any discussion?
It's a pretty good price for a three fifty.
So, you know, what tons?
Fifty thousand. It is a good price, actually.
I know.
How do you say that?
None of them work trucks.
No leather seats, Dave, no leathers.
Yeah.
Does it have air conditioning, Shane?
Yes.
All right.
We love that.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. H ten, can I have a motion to approve the following transfer effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and that this transfer occurs no later than August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, one hundred thousand dollars from the Unemployment Reserve Fund to the Employee Retirement System Reserve slash TRS Subfund?
So moved.
So moved by Laura.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. H eleven, can I have a motion to approve the following transfer effective June thirtieth, and that this transfer occur no later than August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, fifty-one thousand dollars, five hundred, fifty-one thousand, five hundred ninety-three dollars from the unappropriated fund balance be transferred into the Employment Retirement System Reserve TRS Subfund?
So moved.
So moved by Jess, second by Laura. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. H twelve, can I have a motion to approve the following transfer effective June thirtieth, twenty-five, and that this transfer occur no later than August thirty-first, twenty-five, sixty-one thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars from the unappropriated fund balance be transferred to the Employee Benefit Accrued Liability Reserve Fund, EBLR?
So moved.
So moved by Mary, second by Dave. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. H thirteen, can I have a motion to approve the following transfer effective June thirty, twenty twenty-five, and that this transfer occur no later than August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, three hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars from the unappropriated fund balance be transferred into the Capital Reserve Fund?
So moved.
So moved by Laura.
Second.
Second by, I think, is that Mary?
It's me.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. H fourteen, can I have a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six tax warrant in the amount of forty-four million, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars establishing the following corrected tax rates: Hamburg forty-three point seven one six three three nine, Eden thirty-four point two six three three nine four, Boston twenty-five point three five four nine one one, and Orchard Park forty-nine point two five nine four nine zero.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Laura, second by Tom. Very, very specific six-digit accuracy here.
That's required.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's really funny.
All opposed? Motion passes. H fifteen, can I have a motion to approve upon recommendation of the superintendent a settlement agreement with the parents' guardians listed on confidential Schedule A effective August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
So moved by Jess and second by Laura, I believe. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. H sixteen, can I have a motion to approve a food service agreement with Randolph Academy effective July first, twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty-six?
So moved.
So moved by Laura.
Seconded.
Second by Mary. Pretty partnership here. Any discussion?
They cheated at the Super Bowl. I blame them.
You can't blame me. I don't work there anymore.
They make some good suits.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Finally, H seventeen, can I have a motion to approve the extension of the contract to the district vending machine services as listed?
So moved.
So moved by Laura, second by Tom. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And we'll move into public expression. No speakers have signed up for public expression. Last chance. Correct. Seeing no further business, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
So moved, I think, by Tom and Jess.
By everybody, I think.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned at nine nineteen.